I would like to reconvene the meeting and call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of February 19, 2019. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Correia?
Here.
Councilmember Moe?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Interim City Attorney, Mr. Cinco, could you please give a closed session report?
There is no reportable action, but the council did not finish its business, so we'll reconvene closed session after the meeting.
Thank you. As there are no proclamations this evening, our first order of business will be the public comment period. Madam Clerk, please read the criteria for the public comment period of this agenda.
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however state law does not allow action to be taken by the council on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak for them. Madam Mayor, we have seven requests.
Seven, okay. Okay, no further requests to speak will be taken at this time. And you can set the timer for three minutes. Mark Ratamaker, followed by Francesca Shepherd, followed by Alex Mendoza.
Mayor, my fellow San Marians, thank you for three minutes once again. Let's open up our How to Be a Good Santa Maria Citizen Manual. Our Lord's Book, the Holy Bible. Matthew, Chapter 7, let's begin in verse 1. Do not judge so that you will not be judged; for in the way you judge, you will be judged, and by your standard of measure it will be measured to you. Why do you look at the speck that is in your brother's eye, but do not notice the log that is in your own eye? Or how can you say to your brother, "Let me take the speck out of your eye, and behold, the log is in your own eye"? You hypocrite! First, take the log out of your own eye, and then you will see clearly to take the speck out of your brother's eye. Do not give what is holy to the dogs, and do not throw your pearls before swine, or they will trample them under their feet and turn and tear you to pieces. Ask, and it will be given to you; seek, and you will find; knock, and it will be opened to you; for everyone who asks receives, and he who seeks finds; and to him who knocks it will be opened. Or what man is there among you who, when his son asks for a loaf, will give him a stone? Or if he asks for a fish, he will not give him a snake, will he? You then, being evil, know how to give good gifts to your children; how much more will your Father, who is in heaven, give what is good to those who ask Him? In everything, therefore, treat others the way you want others to treat you. This is the law. He sums up the law in the prophets. Enter through the narrow gate; for the gate is wide, and the way is broad; that leads to destruction; and there are many who enter through it; for the gate is small, and the way is narrow; that leads to life; and there are few who find it. Thank you. Good night, Santa Maria.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd, I'd like to put you last, if you don't mind. Alex Mendoza, followed by Tim Mahoney, followed by Gary Hall.
Good evenings, City Council of Santa Maria, residents of Santa Maria. The reason I'm here tonight is regarding the ordinance for the H2A housing, which is very concerning. Excuse me. So regarding about a month ago that the Planning Commission had a meeting stating that they believe that H2A housing should not be in R1, R2, or R3 housing. It's very difficult to deal with that when you're in the ag business, especially because if you guys are aware, a lot of the workers that come from Mexico, they come to live the American dream. They come to, with one opportunity, as many employers have said before, to earn hard money, to, you know, to provide for their family. And, you know, what's very concerning is that we have everything in our R1 housing to this day: sober living homes, housing homes for juveniles, as in placement homes, you want to say, sex offenders, drug addicts, parolees. I heard one of the members of the Planning Commission, I'm not too familiar with his name, stating that they believe we should have a letter sent out to neighbors within 300 feet of an H2A house. I'm a neighbor myself in Santa Maria. I just want to ask maybe you guys, or even anybody here from the Planning Commission, if they're available, why haven't I ever got a letter saying I have a sex offender within my, within 300 feet of my house? In reality, I think that's more concerning than an employee who comes with one opportunity to make money for their family. I'm sure many growers, contractors, have been up here many times informing you guys, acknowledging you guys, the way these programs work. So it's very concerning, especially when you work, you know, when you buy a house for a very positive reason, to, you know, to invest in your company, to, you know, make money for yourself, make money for your family, et cetera. So, you know, once again, I know it's a very difficult situation, but, you know, me being here the last previous time when the Planning Commission had the meeting, it roped off on me the wrong way, especially when, you know, a gentleman from the Planning Commission said, you know, that H2A workers shouldn't be in the R1, R2, R3. You know, where are we going to house these employees? I'm sure none of us are going to wake up tomorrow morning saying, "Hey, I look forward to going to harvest 300 boxes of strawberries." Of course not, you know, we all live for a better opportunity, or we all were raised here to do better things. But for the people in Mexico, and if you guys have heard many people here, and, you know, like I say, contractors, growers, a lot of, it's hard to find loyal workers here in Santa Maria. So, I'm sorry, I'm not here to be biased, ma'am, excuse me, I'm sorry, let me just let...
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mendoza.
Can I just say this last sentence?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm not here to be biased or anything, but, once again, whatever the outcome is, I just feel that before, you know, there is a decision, they really look into it twice, because, this is my last point I'm getting to, with the ordinance going on, we can make this ordinance happen, but these vegetables, fruits, they're not going to wait on us. So, you know, that's pretty much where it is. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Tim Mahoney, followed by Gary Hall, followed by Sarah McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and the audience in Santa Maria. Tim Mahoney with Southern California Gas Company. We're the natural gas provider in Santa Maria and the whole valley here, so your residents and voters and taxpayers are my customers. PG&E provides the electricity and the lights. My company, SoCal Gas, provides the natural gas. So tonight, as our residents are going home, and it's kind of getting cold, they're going to walk over to that thermostat and flip it on. Warm air's going to come out to fill up the chamber in their homes. Well, chances are that warm air is provided by natural gas. And when folks go into the kitchen tonight, turn the stove on, that blue flame burner lights up, that's natural gas. People can take a hot shower, chances are that water is heated by natural gas. So that's who we are, and I just wanted to come up today and let you know that this company is doing fine. And people have probably come to you, as they have come to me, with Diablo Canyon closing, PG&E facing some financial issues, and they've said to me, "How's the gas company doing? You need to go out and give the communities some assurance that the heating and the natural gas is going to be there." And that's what I, one of my goals was to do tonight, was to let you know we are doing fine. Looking into the future, you know, natural gas is part of the California Balanced Energy Portfolio. So we're going to go out, we're going to look, this is really good news, we're going to look for gas in three new areas. It's called renewable natural gas. It comes from landfills, dumps, wastewater plants, sewer plants, and not so much around this area, but in the Central Valley, there's a lot of dairies. And all of those three areas have a waste stream of methane. Methane can be captured by the SoCal Gas Company. We're going to treat it, odorize it for safety, and put that into the pipeline. So where does this natural gas go now? Well, it just simply goes up into the air and creates greenhouse gases and other items. So if you look at renewable natural gas, this is a real help, because we're going to be able to cut down emissions, yet get new gas coming out there. So that's kind of a wave in the future. If you can take that renewable natural gas and give it into the heavy-duty trucking industry, your 18-wheelers, you come up with kind of a double win, because all those 18-wheeler trucks, the semi-trucks now, are using a diesel. So by giving in natural gas into that industry of heavy trucking, you not only cut off the particulates of diesel, but then you also kind of cash the paycheck twice, if you will, because you're taking that renewable natural gas, which is going into the atmosphere, and you're using that. So just wanted to come up and kind of give you an overview on this, and let you know that the gas company's doing fine, and I'll certainly send you some more information. So thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. We haven't seen you in a while up here.
I'll be back.
Thank you. Gary Hall, followed by Sarah McDonald.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of the Ranch of Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad here in Santa Maria. My comments this evening are on behalf of the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Home Team, or NESBIT, which is an organization affiliated with the Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League. NESBIT promotes the general welfare of mobile and manufactured homeowner owners in North Santa Barbara County. We continue to pursue the introduction and implementation of enforceable manufactured home rent stabilization in Santa Maria. Since I stayed here on November 6, 2018, we do acknowledge some progress in the form of a one-hour, 15-minute stakeholder meeting, which was held January 29. That included Mayor Patino, city staff, four park owners and/or managers, and NESBIT. We've had some limited dialogue that has occurred between the park owners, residents since and before. A second stakeholder meeting is scheduled for March 25. In the meantime, manufactured home space rents have continued to rise. As of January 1, a 3.9 CPI-based rent increase was imposed on most of us. At the same time, our seniors on fixed income only received a 2.8% cost of living allowance adjustment. While that was much more than we've seen in recent years, we continue to fall further and further behind. Clearly stated, the manufactured homeowners of Santa Maria need affordable space rent and deserve protection from the continuation of past excessive rent increase practices. An appropriate balance can be established between park owners and homeowners. Fairness should prevail. In keeping with City Manager Stillwell's comments on January 15, that the staff was confident that they would be able to work with the homeowners to find a cooperative solution, we have faith that the City of Santa Maria can and will facilitate action that establishes fairness and provides manufactured homeowners the protection we deserve. To that end, NESBIT is developing a proposed rent stabilization ordinance that will soon be presented to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah McDonald, followed by Samantha Uregas, followed by Francesca Shepherd.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Sarah McDonald, and I'm representing the League of Women Voters tonight as part of their River Park, and I'm happy to see you all. I miss seeing Anna tonight.
Well, she has a bad cold, and I said, "Thank you for not being here."
Okay.
So...
Hopefully she'll feel better.
Yes, thank you. Samantha Uregas, followed by Francesca Shepherd.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here representing Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. We're a local coalition here, and we're going to be providing an update on a campaign we recently did. So studies of California drivers have shown that 30% of drivers in fatal crashes had one or more drug in their systems. A study of active drivers showed more tested positive for drugs that may impair driving at 14% than compared to alcohol at 7.3%, 7.2%. Of the drugs, marijuana was the most prevalent, at 7.4%, slightly higher than alcohol findings. In 2017, the National Center for Statistics and Analysis ranked California as the number two state with the most alcohol-impaired driving fatalities, at 1,120. Out of 58 Super Bowl ads played during the game, eight ads belonged to an alcohol company. The cost per 32nd ad space during the 2019 Super Bowl was $5.2 million. In Santa Maria, there have been 16 alcohol-related deaths between 2006 to 2019. On February 6, 2017, two lives were lost due to someone being under the influence of alcohol after attending a Super Bowl party. Through our Drug-Free Communities Grant, Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley developed a campaign to help raise awareness about the dangers of drinking and driving and activities that take place during the Super Bowl weekend. During the weekend of February 1 through the 3, Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley launched its second Super Bowl campaign. Over 500 stickers were placed on pizza boxes all over Santa Maria and Orqueja. The campaign's focus was to raise awareness against underage drinking, drinking and driving, especially during the Super Bowl, as it's known for drinking. The campaign was well-received in our community. We collaborated with local businesses to raise awareness. Some called on us Sunday asking for more stickers as they had run out. We started the campaign earlier, so instead of just one day, we focused on the entire weekend, Friday through Sunday. Restaurants supporters include Straw Hat Pizza, Domino's Pizza, Ricky's Pizza, Papa Murphy's, and Little Caesar's. Since it was so well-received, our goal's to continue launching campaigns throughout the year to continue raising awareness on the dangers of underage drinking and drinking and driving. We will continue to keep the City Council informed of our campaigns and ask for your continued support in raising awareness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Francesca Shepherd.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, I live close and adjacent, actually, to the Marion Hospital. It is a planned community. The last time I was here, I asked you if you could do something about the parking, and you opened Cypress, which alleviated a number of problems.
Excuse me. Ms. Shepherd, can you speak into the microphone better? Pull it down just a little bit. Thank you.
The opening of the Cypress parking on that street alleviated the parking for a short time. Right now, as of last fall, November, it came back with a vengeance. The hospital had, of course, stopped their people to watch for the security, and I submitted some photos. That is my daily coming home or going in the morning. The people from, in the morning come, and are there by 7:30, and I have difficulty getting in and out of my home. I'm asking that you consider something, you have to, you know, you have the power to do that. I can't get in my front door, plus at times the cars back almost assert into my driveway, and there was no way for me to get in my house. And that happened now recently several times. At times, my mail does not get delivered because the mail, there is no access to my mailbox. It is blocked by cars. And I was told that was a federal problem also because interfering with the mail delivery. Big vehicles do not allow safe exit for my driveway. Cars are racing through the development, and it's been getting worse and worse. From a realistic point of view, this property at this point would be unsellable, because if I were a person, I would never buy it again. Well, I built it in 1982, and there was no problem at that time. I have had abandoned cars in front of my house for two weeks that just took it away the other day. Police took two weeks to come and get it. I made phone calls, and it is a very uncomfortable feeling to have people sitting in front of you day and night for days. And I don't know, I didn't go there to see if some dead person was in there. The option that I'm thinking of, if I could get signs put up there that would say residential property, parking for residents only. I mean, the parking sign, I showed you the picture, there just the hospital put that up. People don't totally ignore it, just drive right back, pass it, and park till there's no room on both sides. Tow away from, to get tickets. I'm sorry. I would like to use cones, but that was not permitted. I found them on the lot, on my front block.
Excuse me one minute, Ms. Shepherd. What are, I guess Dan Commander Cohen can answer that, or Mr. Stillwell. What are our options, what are her options on this?
This is making this question, and sort of the morning researching some of our parking ordinance.
Oh, okay.
It's actually quite challenging, and if you were to post that particular neighborhood for no parking, or for parking just during certain hours, my concern is it could affect...
It'd impact the residents who live there. When they have barbecues, or they have other family members come over, they wouldn't be able to use that space the same as they would now, so it wouldn't just be non-residents. You can post it for certain hours and say, "Nobody can park there during certain hours except by permit," and then only those people coming to the neighborhood who have a permit would be allowed to park there. That's an option. And it's something that probably really should be a neighborhood conversation, because it could impact more than simply one homeowner. It could impact the other people in the neighborhood. When they had guests come over, they would have to have them get permits in advance, or they would be subject to citations. So I think it's quite a challenging issue to deal with a neighborhood parking problem like that, and probably the best way to move forward would be to sit down and talk with the homeowner and many of the residents there to see what they want as a neighborhood.
I think we've pretty much have done that, haven't we, Mr. Stillwell? I think we've done the talking. Go ahead.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. We have been working with the residents in the neighborhood for quite a while, as Ms. Shepherd indicated. We are, the area is underparked. I think we will continue to work with the hospital to get them to reiterate to their employees that parking in the residential area is discouraged. We've looked at expanding the parking on Cypress. We have the new sign up there. I'll continue to work with the hospital. The other two options, we did look at, and that we brought to the traffic committee pursuit at this time, where as Commander Cohen mentioned, a permit parking program and more, no parking zones. And we did expand a no parking zone across the street from Ms. Shepherd's house, and there's other options to do that, but I think as Commander Cohen indicated, there's other impacts of that that we would want to work with the community on as well.
But we did this across from Santa Maria High School, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it worked well, I think, didn't it?
Well, it eliminated the high school from parking there, but I happened to get my hair cut there, and if they don't have enough permits, then the customers for the business that's on the corner there can't stop. So it, just as Commander Cohen said, you kind of squeeze the bubble on one side, and it kind of pops out on the other side, because it creates the issue. So it's not a single-family thing. It is truly, I think, a residential area that has to be approached. But it did effectively eliminate the high school kids from parking there, and in the, I think the 900 block of South McClellan also had permits.
Okay, okay. I thought it was, like, East Morrison? Was it that?
No, I don't think it was Morrison. It was Camille Calejo.
Camille Calejo, okay.
May I comment that this is only my house that's affected? My neighbors don't have a problem. Their wall next door is a, you know, there's no entrance. My house is the only one that has an entrance, and that I can get into my parking lot. And I've talked with the other neighbors. They don't have that much, because nobody goes that far. They go maybe over across the street to Inga's house, and she goes out there and sticks a, she's retired, so she comes out there and sticks a piece of paper on it or chases them away. I tried that last Saturday. I have a picture that you see of this gentleman that just was so obnoxious. I couldn't believe that people would say that.
That's a good picture, that's a good picture of him.
Yeah. He was yelling at me and screaming at me, because I had somebody coming, and I wanted my front door, not somebody parking at my front door, and there were already a couple of cars behind him. And that is not fun to have that happen to you, you know? I just want to have my home back if possible. And the hospital keeps telling me they're going to do something. I had the fourth meeting with Chuck Hoover yesterday, two weeks ago. Pats me on the head, "We'll do something," and another couple of years go by, because this is not just for the first time. "Oh, we're going to do something, we're going to do something." Nothing happens. They are underparked by 140 parking spaces. They rent parking for me, for 100 spaces. The 40, I don't know what happens to the rest of them. So I'm sorry I'm talking loud, but I've had it. I really have had it.
Thank you. And I'll turn this over to Commander Cohen, and we will try to resolve this, because I know this has been going on for a long time. But I spent a few days there at the hospital, driving over there this past week, and I noticed they aren't parked, like, probably not even the next house to Ms. Shepherd. They're not parked there at all. It's just right in front of hers and right across the street. So maybe we can do something there. But thank you very much. So that concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, any other comments, Mr. Stillwell?
Sure, Madam Mayor. A few items. So the H2A item is correct, as Mr. Mendoza mentioned, that was, there was action from the Planning Commission to be referred to the City Council. Staffs reviewing that, preparing the information. We anticipate it coming to the City Council in April. As Mr. Hall mentioned, there is a stakeholder meeting between the mobile home park owners and the homeowners, and those will continue to meet based on the council's direction for us to facilitate the two groups coming together to, for them to work to in a cooperative agreement. And then again, with the hospital parking area, we'll continue to work on that, and we'll follow up with Ms. Shepherd on the various options available for her to consider for that area that may further alleviate the parking challenges she expressed.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read the item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion of a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? No? No? Okay. Yes?
I don't have any items to pull, but should I abstain, since I was not here? I can...
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Correia, you can vote on the minutes if that's what you're concerned about, because the minutes belong to the body of the legislative body, not to the individuals who are there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, so do we want to leave the minutes out of the consent calendar, or not?
No. He says...
Okay. That's okay?
Madam Mayor, yes, it's fine to leave them in. He can vote on them.
Okay, great. Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Fordero?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Next, we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council received a semi-annual update regarding Home for Good activities by Dorothy Mogavero of Northern Santa Barbara County United Way Home for Good.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mogavero.
Good evening again. Just checking, oh, thank you. Hopefully I can do this correctly. Just wanted to start off by saying that Eddie Taylor, your CEO of United Way, was detained. And so he was going to do this opening part, just a couple of minutes, where we talk about where we are moving forward in 2019. So he starts by saying, "In January 2018, the continuum of care program was launched with United Way as the approved operator of the project. This program is designed to promote community-wide commitment to the goal of ending homelessness, providing funding for efforts by nonprofit providers, state and local governments to quickly rehouse individuals and families experiencing homelessness. We want to minimize their trauma and dislocation, promote access to and effective utilization of mainstream programs, and optimize self-sufficiency by our homeless. This initiative has been named Home for Good. The Santa Maria Bay staff and the mayor corps members have had extraordinary success in year one of our Home for Good effort. It is important for the council to know that the first year of the effort was all about data. This was accomplished through a coordinated entry system where the homeless in our communities were made aware of established entry points, the locations where someone could access the program, along with street outreach workers who would meet them where they were. We were able to work with the county of Santa Barbara to establish one database in which all the information relative to these homeless individuals and families, by each of our partners in coordination with them, put the information into this system and that all this information was accessed by our partners. This database has drastically reduced the duplication of efforts which we have experienced in the past. We're able to reach out to each other and coordinate what we are doing for each individual and family. While there is still work to be done in reaching the homeless who are not in the database and the people who are becoming newly homeless, this Phase One has been, by and large, completed based on the total number of homeless we understand are in our communities, and we are now moving into Phase Two and Phase Three of Home for Good in 2019. In Phase Two, our efforts will be focused on what we call document-ready for the individuals who are in the database. Specific documents are needed for each individual and family in order for them to be placed into housing when it does become available. There lies the kicker, available housing. So we have jump-started Phase Three also. We need available housing, and as you have heard us say in the past, we cannot solve this homeless problem if we can't build. But we cannot build our way out of this problem quickly enough or in sufficient numbers. So we have to create new relationships and creative opportunities with landlords and even consider other creative housing techniques. So where are we at this point? Our partnerships currently have over 200 supportive housing units identified within several different properties, each in various stages of entitlement and development, which of course takes time. Equally important, we are developing unique and creative strategies with landlords to provide a similar number of housing opportunities for our various homeless populations. For instance, our seniors, our youth, our special needs, our veterans, and so forth. As we implement Phase Two and Three of this initiative, we will keep you informed on a regular basis of our progress. Now, let's take a look at our 2018 results. We want to let you know what we have done in this past year. So, let's see. Yay. So this is a collaborative effort, like we talked about, all of our agencies coming together. Home for Good is a county-wide initiative that supports a coordinated entry system throughout the county that engages and connects our individuals and families experiencing homelessness to housing and the supportive services they need. Very important. We're not just looking at housing, we're trying to look and make sure what are their specific needs and to get those taken care of with them. This program utilizes a Housing First model to support permanent housing for our chronic and vulnerable individuals and families. Many suffer from mental health issues as well as other disabilities that may cause their prolonged homelessness. We need to gather around them. We need to provide them with those support services so they get the counseling and the medical attention they need because that's what's going to help keep them in the housing that we provide. We engage with our homeless neighbors, building trust, bridging gaps in services, and aligning services to enable self-sufficiency as much as possible. That is our effort, is to get them self-sufficient. We know that there are some that we will walk with the rest of their life, and that is part of the program. So, I don't know how well you can see, those numbers are a little small, but helping people find a home for good. And so here in North County, we took 91 individuals off the street in 2018 from January through December. We had, let's see, 48 people that entered the shelters, that's again, getting them off the street, getting them out of the environment of going to and from emergency situations and the police department and so forth, and getting them to an actual shelter. We have 14 that we entered, had them enter detox, get them back on their feet, and then start to look for housing for them. We had, let's see, 17 that were reunified. So important factor for us, we try and reunify them with family or those who will take them in and give them a fresh start. So that just gives you an idea of the effects of this program so far. And that's just in the first year, along with trying to get the program running and understanding it and making all of our network and so forth. So basically what we do is we need to know their needs, and how do we do that? We do what's called a VI SPID Act, a Vulnerability Index Service Prioritization Decision Assistance Tool. In short, we call it a VI. So this is a tool that we use to measure their risk and their prioritization in assisting them. We're really taking a look at caring for the most vulnerable to get them off the street, to keep them from getting worse in their health conditions, affecting our businesses, and also give them that specific care that they need to be successful. So all of this goes into the system we talked about a little bit ago. It's called our Homeless Management Information System, in short HMIS. Everything has an acronym. And this is a local technology system used by all of our partner agencies who want to be part of this initiative. And so we collaboratively bring all the information together, we all access it, we call each other to assist each other in getting our homeless individuals and families taken care of. This is just a little bit of information, what are the basics of an effective system? Prioritization, low barrier, meaning they have access to us, person-centered, equal access, standardized access, and more. Housing First being the middle, where that is our focus to get them off the streets along with giving them support services at the same time. When we started this, we approached businesses about a year. An informal survey of businesses was conducted throughout the county that garnered about 227 responses from a diverse set of businesses. Businesses like restaurants, factories, stores, offices, salons, and those that were affected by the homelessness issue. When we asked these businesses to make a response about homeless people hanging outside of their business, the majority responded with the following statement. "Homeless people are clearly suffering and need a better community response to help them." Home for Good has accepted this calling and role to assist with bringing our agencies, organizations, businesses, and community together as we go out into the streets, the alleys, the riverbeds, the shelters, and any other place where people are trying to survive in a place not meant for human habitation. It takes a village to raise a safe environment. We establish locations where the homeless know where to find us, when we start getting them help and start the process. Outreach teams go out into the community, connect with the homeless, and offer them ways to change their circumstances. In fact, we also have strategic places like the library, where we know a lot of them like to go there to kind of hang out, to meet each other, sometimes use the library facility. But we're able to connect with them there and start to give them the services and hopefully get them to migrate somewhere else to meet with us and to make a change. We're looking at building trust, acceptance, and understanding. Sometimes these interactions will take days, weeks, months before they'll allow us to start to help them or that they want the help. There are also strategic locations where our homeless congregate, like I spoke about, the library is one of them, some of our main businesses like fast food places and places like that. With our partners, outreach at these sites becomes another place to connect with our homeless, like the library, Town Center Mall, and other places like that. Services where they're doing showers and haircuts and things like that. So, let's take a look at our library because it is a big project for us. We've been, the assistance and support of the city, we've been able to place someone at the library 20 hours a week. Has made a huge impact, I think, for the library and for us. So we had about 1,347 face-to-face contacts. 1,347 people that we met at the library, starting from March until the end of the year. That's a lot of face-to-face opportunities. We had 97 VI's completed. 97 of these, 94 of these people allowed us to go ahead and start to help them and assist them. Remember the 1,347, sometimes that's the same person, you know, from time to time. That's not separate individuals. And we had 844 referrals or services provided. One of the aspects of this program is that it's not just to get them into the system and take a look at what their needs are, it's actually to provide them with referral information, where to find food, where to find certain types of assistance, where to get an appointment to get primary care and things like that, to get them to start to help themselves. So, who we helped. And this just indicates that in our whole HMIS system, which is county-wide, 13% of those that we come in contact with are homeless families. To us, that's a lot. We don't want any of our families on the street. We had 9% are veterans, 14% were families that were assessed in this area here in Santa Maria, and 86% are individuals. So you can see mostly individuals on our streets. So this is a status and results for just Santa Maria, to give you an idea of what we've encountered here as we have our daily encounters with our homeless. We found that 24 of them were veterans that are living on the street right now that we have accounted for. 74 individuals are now document-ready, looking for housing. We have 26 families in need of housing. We have 145 individuals in total in need of housing. We have 52 that are connected now to primary care who were not before 2018. We have 27 connected to behavioral wellness to help them in those aspects. 63 now have income. 36 have had budgets done and performed with them to change their financial situation. 11 have had legal issues addressed. Three have been placed in custody. Not good, but it happens. Only one has been hospitalized, hospitalizedized that we've been working with. We have eight individuals that have returned to the streets, and that's always a sad one for us. We get them housing, we get them placed. They make an attempt to be self-sufficient or even, you know, continue with counseling and things like that. And for different reasons, they just, it's too hard. They just don't, they don't make it the first time around. And so we're working with them again. And we have two individuals so far who have absolutely refused any type of service and they walk away from us. This gives you an idea of how we measure up to the rest of the county. How many homeless do we have in our HMIS records that all of us as agencies are working with? So Carpinteria, there's 20, Goleta 25, Isle Vista 25. Santa Barbara has the largest number at this point in time, 633 individuals and families they put into the system they're trying to work with. Lompoc has 264, and Santa Maria right now has 469. That's quite a group of people that we're trying to connect with. As I said, make them document-ready so they are prepared and ready to get into housing and give those support services that will keep them to be successful. I want to say thank you so much to the city for all of your support and of course, all of our other agencies, businesses that are supporting us financially and with volunteers and so forth, and of course, my staff for the great job that they've done in 2018. And we look forward to an amazing 2019 as we go forward with really trying to now get them off the streets and not just be pulling data. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mogavero. Do we, any questions from the dais? Dr. Moats?
Yeah, that was a great talk. I think I learned a lot. What documents do they need to get to be document-ready?
There's a lot of the basics. There's their ID, of course, so it could be, you know, a passport that they have, or it could be a California driver's license or just an ID, birth certificate. There is a verification of homelessness that has to occur also. So there's some basic documents like that.
And where do they go to get their healthcare needs met?
Well, what we do is we go ahead and set them up with CHC perhaps, any of the health providers that they may qualify for. So we take them, we get them the appointment, we go with them, and they get set up and they end up having issued a primary physician, which is really what we not want, instead of them going to emergency all the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me ask you, I noticed you, all the different categories. How many of those though had drug and alcohol-related issues?
I don't know the numbers. We haven't broken it out that way. But when we've taken a look at just percentages based on our outreach staff and who they're dealing with, we're probably looking at a good 20% where we end up needing to put them into detox, if they're willing to go, or at least, you know, behavioral wellness, which also will address those types, different types of addictions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions here?
No, I just want to say thank you for the work that you're doing. You know, I was really, I love to see that number of only two individuals who refuse services. Out of the 469, I think that there's this huge misconception that a lot of the people who are homeless or houseless refuse service. And so I think that bottom line, like you said it earlier, we need to create an environment where everybody feels safe and that they have a home. And the housing being, housing, the housing-based model first is so effective. I know that it's something that's being done across the country where before we can even expect anybody to sober up or receive mental health services, having a safe place to call home is the first step and also ensuring that they stay off the streets once they start getting into that care.
Thank you. Don't get me wrong, I mean, they may initially say, "Well, I don't know, I don't know, I think I'm okay out here." And they, in a way, that's a type of refusal, but not to the point where they won't accept referral information, where to get food. So they're still looking for a little bit of help and it's building those relationships. My outreach people are there, out there every single day, including weekends now, and really coming across the same people, saying, "Are you ready now? Are you ready now? Look what we can do for you. You know, what do you need? What do you want?" And so it's not a flat refusal, it's really kind of building the relationships, building the understanding of what we're going to do and realizing it's not like the old times where we would help them and walk away. We continue however long.
Right, and I just want to add that with the general plan update that we have coming forward, really focusing on housing, given that we have so many, I mean, 26 families is too many families being without a home. And so we can, I'm looking forward to see what we can do.
Thank you. And that's just the ones we have in the system. There's a lot of families and individuals out there we haven't even had an opportunity to speak with yet. And we'll continue.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Mogavero. And Mr. Taylor needs to thank you also. And now we have another presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Armenta. Good evening.
Howdy. Ernest Armenta, City of Santa Maria. Out of the 469 individuals, maybe staff or the... Out of the 469 individuals, maybe staff or the presenter can maybe give information on how many of them were children, how many of them were women, how many of the homeless were elderly. And second, and I think staff, when Mr. Taylor comes back, if we can find out, how many other nonprofits are doing the same work? Actually doing the same duplication of services? Are they all, do we have multiple nonprofits receiving money, receiving public funds to do the same job, Ms. Patino? I, I think that there's many other, I'm concerned that we're not counting the folks out there, even the president, the young lady came up and spoke. I think, but instead of staying at the library, you ought to go to some of these homes of the folks that have their grandchildren living with them that are homeless, or even sometimes non-relatives. I, I think that, I have concerns that we have, other than that, that we have a serious duplication of services. Now, it's a good job, and I, that they're out there doing it, but I think that we should bring back, at the next time we have our city block grants funding, that we find out how many of the agencies out there are doing the same work. I have no, I understand that men have rights to be housed too, but my concern is the children. We have, out of the 469 individuals they came in contact with, I think the presenter must come to this council and show how many of them were children and how many of them were elderly. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have another presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation from the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce regarding the outcome of a recent craft cocktail competition.
And, Mr. Morris, it's not going to, obviously not going to be you, okay?
These are the fun ones to me.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Restaurant Week happens every year. This year, Santa Maria Style Restaurant Week was held January 16th to the 27th, and was part of a California Restaurant Month, a designation by Visit California in its ninth year. A record number, 40 destination partners participated this year, each with distinct programming, festivals, or experiences. Santa Maria has collaborated with Visit California for the last three years and had 19, we had 19 local restaurants and winery participants this year. Restaurant Week was an incredible opportunity to take advantage of some of the most authentic culinary experiences our destination has to offer, including wine pairings and desserts with offerings starting at $20.19. This year, we expanded our program to include a craft cocktail contest, the first of its kind for our destination. Any restaurant or bar participating in Restaurant Week was encouraged to participate. Cocktail entries had to contain at least two ingredients, be handcrafted, complex, and unique to each restaurant or bar. There were two opportunities to win, judge's choice and fan favorite. For the judge's choice, the Bureau handpicked judges from the local hospitality community and a few nonprofit organizations, and invited them to visit each location throughout the month of December, to rate each of the entries on taste, presentation, and authenticity. The judges happily agreed, of course, and were eager to get their ballots filled out and returned to us. The fan favorite was determined by the amount of mentions across Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook. Participants were encouraged to rally their social media followers to visit their locations, try their signature cocktail entry, and vote by using the hashtag #SMVCraftCocktail. With over 60 mentions spanning the three social platforms, we certainly found our fan favorite. The drink entries included Anthony's Strawberry Mango Margarita, Blast 825 Brewery's Jalapeno Margarita, the Historic Santa Maria Inn's The Hollywood, Maya Mexican Restaurants' The Michelada, the Holiday Inn's The Red Martini, and the Radisson's The Santa Maria Slade. And they were definitely beautiful, and I'm sure very good.
And you didn't bring any samples, though?
Glenn, you can, I asked Glenn. Glenn told me now, so we will talk to him about that later.
Next time, you don't have to listen to Glenn.
Noted. The new initiative was successful because of the social media collaboration from our park participating restaurants and bars. We even got on Visit California's radar, where they tweeted, "We volunteer to be a judge at Visit Santa Maria Valley's, getting in the California Restaurant Month spirit by hosting their first-ever craft cocktail contest, January 16th to the 27th." We were pretty proud to get on their radar. It's pretty challenging to do that when you're up against places like Santa Monica and Los Angeles and Sacramento, so it was pretty exciting. Social media played a significant role in the success of this initiative. Using SantaMarianValley.com/RestaurantWeek is our key mechanism to gauge the return on our investment. That showed that 17,300 website hits happened on SantaMarianValley.com in the month of January, and over 4,100 of those sessions included a visit to the Restaurant Week and Craft Cocktail landing pages. That's 20% of the total website sections. People were paying attention. So with that, I'd like to show a quick little video that was on social media and helped us really spread the word about the campaign. I love visuals. Pretty impactful. So, as we get ready to announce our winners, I want to encourage the two winners that we do have to take a minute just to briefly explain what their inspiration was behind the drink. So, I'd like to do our fan favorite first, and that was the Michelada from the Maya. So, congratulations.
Hello, City Council and everybody else. We would like to thank everybody for this very awesome generous vote. We do want to shout out to our marketing team, GBM, and they have really helped us with getting the word out, you know, on social media, because we all know it's really time-consuming to be on there all the time trying to push your business, but you have to run your business at the same time. So, thank you.
And our esteemed judges that we had out voting declared the official Santa Maria Valley Craft Cocktail winner to be the Historic Santa Maria Inn's The Hollywood. Come on up.
It's an honor to be the first winner of this award. Thank you, Glenn, and the rest of the Santa Maria Valley staff for promoting this. This was a fun week for us, doing Restaurant Week and Craft Cocktail, and it's an honor to receive this. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you to Yirelli Corona, who is my tours and coordinator, who managed the entire program, and thank you to all of our partners. Many of them are actually here, most of the craft cocktail participants are here tonight. So, thank you, all of you, for your help in making this successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive and file a quarterly financial report for the second quarter ending December 31st, 2018.
Staff report is to be made by Director of Finance, Ms. Harvey.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers of staff and public. Tonight, I will briefly present the quarterly financial report for the second quarter ended December 31st, 2018. I will be primarily reviewing the annual, excuse me, startled me, version. I'll be primarily reviewing the General Fund and Enterprise Funds. The beginning fund balance of nearly $10,072,000 is the unaudited balance of July 1st, 2018. Concerning city revenues through the second quarter of the year, sales tax receipts are 10.3% greater than the second quarter last fiscal year. Much of this variance is attributed to the new businesses at Enos Ranch that have boosted sales in consumer goods and restaurants. In addition, the city received back payments from the state to correct sales tax allocation errors for prior quarters. Most of those errors are as a result of businesses having trouble with reporting sales information in the state's new computer system. NHIS revenues are about $881,000, which is an increase of about 6.4% as compared to the $829,000 in receipts received through the second quarter of last year. NHIS materials received during the first six months of 2018-19 came from Chevron's San Luis Obispo Tank Farm Project, two Vandenberg Air Force Base projects, and the Gabiota Terminal Project. However, NHIS activity has significantly decreased in January and is projected to be limited in February and March due to the rainy season. It is unclear when Chevron's Tank Farm Project will resume, and with no significant project anticipated at this time, since the uncertainty of NHIS activities, staff anticipates revenues will remain at about $181,000 through the end of the year. That is more than double the original estimates, though, of $400,000. Permit revenue is at approximately $1.2 million, or 44.7% of budget, and $361,000 less than received during the same period last year. Permits issued in the previous year for Enos Ranch development is the main reason for the decrease in revenues. General Fund expenditures are at 44.4% of budget and are currently on course to realize $3 million in salary savings included in the 2018-19 budget to help address the budget deficit. However, our expenditures are still expected to exceed our revenue estimates by about $3.7 million. Concerning Measure U, revenues through the second quarter are ahead of budget at 53.3% or $2.6 million. Expenditures are at 47.1% of budget or $2.5 million. However, while preparing the Measure U second quarter report, staff discovered three police positions were duplicated in the Measure U budget, and costs associated with one of those budgets was charged to Measure U in error. Police Measure U budgets are overstated by about $513,000. Approximately $100,000 expenditures will be moved from Measure U to the General Funds. Including these adjustments, overall Measure U expenditures are on budget at 50.1%. Through the first half of the fiscal year, overall Measure U revenues exceeded expenditures by about $157,000, increasing fund balance to about $474,000. Through December, 89% of all Measure U expenditures were spent on public safety-related activities, with 36% expended on fire operations and 53% expended on police operations. As for the Enterprise Funds, the Water and Waste Water Fund revenues exceeded expenditures by $4.2 million. Expenditures included the semi-annual debt service interest payment of $746,000 on the 2012 refunding bonds. The remaining $3.9 million payment of principal and interest will be paid in the third quarter of the fiscal year. For the Solid Waste Fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by $1.4 million. The Transit Fund revenues outpaced expenditures by $159,000. Fair revenues for the first half of the fiscal year are just shy of $410,000, and the Fairbox ratio is 26%. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Harvey? I guess there are. Oh, Dr. Moes.
Yeah, on the bottom left-hand corner of page two, with the General Fund, it says the revenues are about $28,951, and the expenditures are about $33,899. So, there's a $5,000 difference between what we brought in and what we're paying out. And will that be made up by the, of the late recovery of the property taxes, or will that be paid up with finishing off the LEAF fund or the, the other amount of money that we have set aside for a rainy day?
We will receive more property tax, so that will increase that. However, we will, we do estimate that we will be able to, need to use some of the LEAF funding, that $2.7 million, that, $3.7 million, that I, we are expecting that we will, our expenditures will be more than our revenues in total.
Are we going to use up all the LEAF fund, or will there be some left?
Currently, it would be using a good majority of it. It would not, we won't be, we did not have to use any last fiscal year, which we had thought we did, we were going to. So, we will have a little bit left over, but there won't be that much, it'll be a couple, maybe $2 million.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Harvey? Ms. Soto?
Yeah, can you, so the 8.5 gap is going to be closed a little bit more, right?
Yes.
By the end of the entire fiscal year?
Correct.
So, that means that our deficit will be less than what we expected it to be originally?
Correct.
Is there, is there any way that we could look into also what it would, you know, looking at possibly reopening our city halls on Fridays? I mean, I'd just really like to see the comparisons and see what we can do about that.
We could certainly look at different options. We can work, I can work with the city manager's office on how to go about that, and we can bring that back.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Harvey. And, Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence?
We have no written correspondence, and we have one request to speak.
One request to speak? Okay, Mr. Armenta?
Madam Chair, Mrs. Harvey? I'd like to know, Mrs. Harvey, since I've said it before, I have a hard time understanding her, but not on her part, it's on me, I would like her to explain again the $513,000 from the Santa Maria Police Department. How they miss, or not misuse, but somehow or another, the management of the police department were duplicating fees, or, she can go over it again and explain it to me in a layman's terms, where I can get a clear understanding.
Ms. Harvey, would you like to explain that again, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The $513,000 is in Measure U, and so there was a duplication of some, of some positions in the budget. We have not expended those funds, we just budgeted more than we should have. So, we, we don't have additional authorization to hire those positions, so there won't be any expenditures for those positions.
And is it possible, maybe someone from the police department can explain how this error, or how did we get to this point?
No, there isn't anyone here, but Mr. Armenta, I certainly will have someone contact you.
If, Mrs. Harvey, if I was looking at your report here, and I wanted to find out the total amount of fees waived to the Enos Family Trust or the Enos Ranch Project, if I was, wanted to look at your report and see all the $8,1600 fees that Mike Cudero, Michael Moes, Alice Patino, and now Mrs. Soto, and Mrs. Waterfield waived, where would I find that here in your report?
I don't think you would.
Mrs. Harvey, I'd like to know if I was looking, if I am, Madam Chair, if I was looking at your report, where would I find that, Ms. Harvey?
The $8,1600 fees are not in this report.
I would respectfully request, Madam Chair, if I find Mrs. Harvey to be astute and professional, every time I doubt with her, but we need to get a clear point on this. See, Ms. Madam Chair and all present, what was his name, Jack Owens, Trent Bendetti, and Russell Mangow, Mike Cudero, Michael Moes, Alice Patino, and Mrs. Waterfield, and Jack Boyson, all came to us and told us that we were in a financial crisis, that we needed for Mr. Armenta and all others to take more money and spend more on everyday living. So, I would say this, that if we're going to waive fees from the Enos Family Trust or any developer in that case, that it should be in this budget. So, we, the taxpayers and ratepayers, those living check by check and get a clear understanding of this, what is Mike Cudero, Alice Patino, and Michael Moes, and is what is Mike Cordero, Alice Patino, and Michael Moats, and Ms. Soto doing? And Mrs. Waterfield, I understand, Madam Chair, Mrs. Harvey, then, Ms. Soto, you were not present at the time, but you inherit all decisions made, so now they are your decisions. So, that's my request, that any fees waived for the Inos Ranch Project must be presented to the public and be included in the budget, so we can get a clear understanding. Second, I see that the fire, see, over budget, so we have the fire department is a one point six percent of two hundred and eleven thousand roughly due to overtime expenditures. I assume, Mrs. Harvey, or Madam Chair, or Mr. Stillwell, that that will be reimbursed, correct?
That's going to be reimbursed, because that's with other state agencies, it's mutual aid revenues, yes.
Okay, definitely. So, Madam Chair, if, I will end by this, if, it's up to you guys. You guys are elected officials, not Mrs. Harvey. You folks give direction to Mr. Stillwell, and Mr. Stillwell gives direction to the department heads. And I would make this simple request, that any fees waived for the Inos Ranch Project or any development shall be included into the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armenta. Thank you, Ms. Harvey. The next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. The next meeting of the City Council is March 5th, and we have a couple Measure U items on that agenda. One is the report from the Measure U Committee that met last night and completed an annual report to refer to the City Council, so you, we anticipate you'll receive that on March 5th. We also have an item for direction from the City Council of expenditures related to Measure U. That'll give us some insight into the prioritization of new services, enhanced and maintained services for us to develop the upcoming budget with, so it meets the council's intent. Also, on March 5th, we have two proposed proclamations, one for Arbor Week, which is March 7th through 14th, and one international, one for International Women's Day, which is March 8th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. So now, the next item is the oral reports of council members. Ms. Soto, let's start with you.
I'm trying to pull up my calendar. The week of, when was it, January 21st, 28th? Mr. Stillwell and I attended the New Council Member Academy out in Irvine through League of Cities. It was a really great opportunity to meet other fellow council members across the state of California, their city attorneys, and their city managers, and just learn from what other folks are doing across the state. I attended on February 8th the Cracker Barrel Grand Opening. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Dr. Moats?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On January 16th, I finally did the Ben Hayes Show, as I will be doing tomorrow morning. So I've taken copious notes. I attended the Planning Commission, where they discussed the H2A program, also on the 16th, which, by the way, lasted till 10:30 at night, and everyone's completely exhausted. I went to the UCSB Economic Forum at the Alice Hall on January 17th. I was told I had to attend the ethics training on Monday, February 11th. And I went to the police awards breakfast on February 12th.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, I didn't do too much in attending things. However, I did have a conversation, a phone conversation with Andy Caldwell, and he has some issues with regards to H2A. They're input issues, not issues of concern or anything. He wants to talk more about it. So this is an issue that is reaching out to other areas and corners of our community, and I think after we listen to all of those issues, we'll be able to have a better project. I want to take this time also to thank the public for all the calls and well wishes while I was dealing with a serious health issue. I'm not out of that health issue yet. I'm still under the guidance and protection of my wife. I got a call from all of my coworkers here in the, on the council, other people from the city, so many people. I don't know how people get my phone number and email, and private email, and...
Nothing is secret, you know that.
So I received an overwhelming sense of appreciation and offering, well wishing for this, for my illness, and I appreciate that. But I'd like to isolate one woman. This young lady apparently watches the council meetings, and she sent me a card with a little puppy on the front, and it was only a few words, but they meant so much to me, and because of who it was. It was the wife of late Councilman Leo Treheu, Eileen Treheu, that sent me a very warm card, and if she's watching, I certainly appreciate her card to help me to feel better and recover from this. And now that I'm on the other side of that, I hope to get back into full swing and participate more in the responsibilities that we are each issued. Thank you.
Thank you. January 17th, I attended the SB CAG Board of Directors meeting, and in the afternoon, the APCD Board meeting. On the January 20th, I attended Respect for Life Walk at City Hall. January 22nd, the 2019 Point in Time Count Volunteer Training. January 23rd, I attended the meeting on flavored tobacco ban and retail license program strategy meeting at the Forest Square Church, and the Marion Foundation Board of Directors meeting. January 24th, I attended the 2019 Homeless Point in Time Count. You were there, weren't you? Yeah. Okay. And the 25th is Fighting Back Santa Maria Board, Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Board meeting. On the 26th, I went to the Central Coast Literacy Council Annual Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon. On January 28th, the All Catholic Schools Mass at St. Mary's, and the Santa Barbara County APCD Community Advisory Council, and later, the Cause Action Fund meeting. On January 30th, I inducted the Board of Officers to the Boys and Girls Clubs and attended at the Santa Maria and the Plains All American Pipeline Open House and VIP event. On January 31st, I attended a webinar at the Attorney's Office, Can a Mayor Solve Homelessness? And from February 22nd to the 7th, I attended a CADCA 29th Annual National Leadership Forum in Washington, DC. February 10th, I didn't, no, February 10th, I didn't do anything.
We'll look into that.
Twenty-four hours, from the time I got up to the time I landed in slow, yeah. February 11th, I attended the Ethics Training. February 12th, the Annual Police Awards Breakfast at the Radisson Hotel. And I just, you know, I think that is, I wish everyone in the city of Santa Maria could have been in attendance, just to hear what some of our young men and women do on a day-to-day basis is, you know, it makes you so proud to have these, these men and women as our police officers. And the Officer of the Year, Officer Sean Westner, I think he was very surprised that he was selected by his peers, but the Life Saving Award of Sergeant Torterica and Corporal Prescott, and the things that they did, helping, you know, this, this baby, and just the things that our, our officers do all year long is just amazing. Anyway, February 12th, that's the Annual Police Awards. That afternoon, I met with Grower Shipper Association, the Strawberry Commission. February 13th, did the North County Subregional Meeting in Solvang, and the SB CAG Executive Meeting. On February 14th, met with the Pacific Christian Third Grade Class Tour of City Hall, and they always like to come in and sit on these seats. They just love it and like to get their pictures taken here. And this morning, did the Ben Hayes Radio Show and Rotary. Any other comments from the dials?
Well, Madam Mayor, I forgot to mention a couple of events that I attended. On February 7th, I attended Hilda's 100th Birthday Party.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Over Swango, that's a senior housing complex and so, yeah, they had a great celebration of balloons. Her whole family was there in a band, so that was fun. And then, on February 10th, I attended the Libraries Fundraiser. That was great. And then, lastly, on February 16th, I attended the vagina monologues that took place at the Santa Maria Civic Center, and so it was really great to hear them really focus on the struggles and issues that people with, with vaginas face.
Thank you. No further comments? Yes, Mr. Stillwell? Okay, we will recess to close session.